Brown, we're gonna just. Which one? The HVAC mark?
Yes, HVAC and then um.
So Senior Center, Pete, do me a favor, we're gonna keep it real, real precise, okay? Senior Center, the system over there is.
So you have nineteen ninety-six system, it's outdated, it's old, it's it's. Needs a lot of repair, um, parts are somewhat hard to get, your ductwork is shot. It needs to be replaced.
Okay, tell me what my options are.
So I have done some research and gotten some quotes, um. Heat pumps are pretty much m- my recommendation, um, I have three quotes, your heat pumps that I have sourced out through our vendors. Will theoretically heat below zero degrees still. And and cool to you guys, um, you know, obviously when it's hot, um. I would also recommend that you do have an oil fire, oil-fired furnace down there that is also tired, that it be renovated. So you have a redundant source of heat should something terrible happen. Um, cuz you are a cooling center and probably heating center. Um, so to to be very precise and leave it to you guys for later discussion, I I have submitted three quotes to the the council. Um, and I will briefly go through them, um. One quote calls for three outside, three new outside condensers, um. With a total of about a hundred and forty-four thousand BTUs. Which would cover a square uh footage area of fifty-seven. Sixty square feet, your senior center is approximately, um. Fifty-six thousand, so that would, that would be sufficient. Cost for that is about sixty-four thousand, I'm rounding.
Pete's on the last page of your packet.
Yes, yes. And there's one typo and I will point it out, um, for you won't get it. Um, another quote from same company, the local vendor has done lots of work for our town, very reasonable. Um, they've got a hundred and two thousand square feet. Uh, I'm I'm sorry, would cover a hundred and two thousand BTUs, four thousand eighty feet. Just a little, a little less than than I'm comfortable with, but that quote calls for two outside condensers. And that would be for forty-one thousand dollars. It would not be hard to ask that first, that vendor to add a condenser or two if we wanted. A reasonable cost. Then we went to um, um, Saymore, the people doing the school, I got a quote from them. Uh, they gave me quite an engineered package, um, I I think it's overkill, but I certainly that would be up to this group. It covers two hundred and fifty-eight thousand BTUs. Which would need a, or call a ten thousand square foot building. And the cost for that, and this is my typo, if I wrote three hundred eighty-one thousand, I am incorrect, it is three hundred eighteen thousand dollars for their.
Well, there you go.
It is, it is, it is, in my opinion, it's way over the, over engineered, I would strongly recommend you go for the number one. Sixty-four thousand, he uses Mitsubishi units. Um, they have a great tenure, uh manufactured product warranty. Uh, we, I believe you have a five year through the company, uh, on labor if we need it. Uh. You know, uh, you also, I would budget approximately fifteen thousand dollars if we wanna rebuild the furnace. This is the furnace that a year ago, we agreed, we would try to, uh. Remove some sections, reduce it and fix it, the parts are, turned out are not available. The money was not spent. Whatever you encounter is still available. But if you're gonna do, you either rebuild or replace this furnace, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, did you say the money for the furnace has been budgeted already?
For what, last year you approved, I think, a five or six thousand dollar above.
Yeah.
Uh, repair for the furnace, meaning we would take some sections out, reduce it. Cannot be done, unfortunately. The parts are no longer manufactured. For that, so your option is to replace the furnace, abandon the furnace, which I would not recommend. I like redundancy, I like to be safe. Um, I would, you know, if we get a terrible twenty below day, it would be nice to have that as backup. So, just just to have it there. So I would just let, tell you to factor that in, you're figuring.
Okay.
Um, and I wanna keep it, I'm gonna stop right there.
Now, so are the chapels?
Yep. Your chapel, there's a group of people, they use a chapel for the book sale, um, you have, I think, an eighteen thirty-five, eighteen thirty is. Ingrid would probably know, but somewhere around there, correct? Building, pretty much uninsulated, you have nineteen fifty, nineteen thirty windows in there. Uninsulated, you're losing a lot of heat, you're losing a lot of cool when you heat this. Uh, so I I I got two quotes, I presented them to Mark, one for nineteen thousand dollars to fix the existing unit, use the ductwork, make that work again. And one for ten thousand dollars to put a split unit on the wall with a new condenser. Very efficient, again, goes down to about, uh. Five degrees, it'll work till. Um. It it's an energy eater, that that building will eat lots of energy, but if you wanna cool it and heat it, that would be my recommendation to go to ten thousand dollar unit. Um, we might wanna consider blowing in insulation, depending on how thick the wall is. I can, I can do some exploring.
So look, so then I'm gonna add some.
I am going too far, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're doing fine, but my thing is, nobody hear from the the chapel or the book. Friends of the library, book and books here on everything, right? We need heat in there in the winter time, it doesn't, does it have any plumbing or anything?
No, there's no plumbing.
So there's no pipes to burst or anything on? So we need heat in there during the weekend when they have a book sale.
That would be correct. Or you could close it down during the coldest parts of the winter.
I I'd love to know what they, what they bring to the library for money for the book sale that we're putting in. And heating and stuff, because it's it's just. And the second thing is. Uh, they they have an air conditioning system in there now?
It is defunct, the board is shut, yeah.
And what do they do, three book sales each, summer?
I do not know.
Okay. Alright.
I don't think the books would get damaged if it gets too cold.
They don't care, they never say a thing.
I never said anything.
Their their issue would be the ninety-five degree humid days, books will absorb moisture.
Right.
Yeah.
Or the summer shine will let.
Pause is not, uh, wet and everyone please.
Alright, so going on Pete's recommendation, we're looking at seventy-five thousand dollars for HVAC and two, in in the library. Not library, that's kinda something. Uh, the chapel and the senior center.
Right.
Um, that does not include the fifteen thousand for the furnace, correct?
For the furnace.
I would, I would tell you, yeah, that would be a separate.
Okay, I'm just adding it up, like my numbers, ninety thousand dollars. Okay. Uh. Okay. We can find the money. It's kinda not really Robin Peter, big ball, but it's kinda.
Shoveling.
Yeah, Tom. Peter, we have to give up some of his money, but. Um, we saved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a slip line bid. So we have money that we can move over and and do this for ninety thousand dollars, in addition to that. Uh, public works roof needs. Since you're here, I'm gonna ask you about it, thirty thousand dollars maybe repair?
Yeah, so the roof is a steel roof, um, excuse me, screened down steel roof, my estimate is from seventy-two, seventy-five. It needs to be, all the food needs to be replaced, and I recommend that we seal the the seams. Cuz on Starry Show signs a little bit of where it's still in really good shape, it can be saved.
Alright, and estimated is on the high side thirty thousand.
That would be, yeah, that would be even repair, I just received the second repair today. A quote, a little higher than that, I sent it to Mark. Uh, from Close Roof Systems, um, they do very similar, ninety-six thousand dollars.
Ninety-six thousand?
Yeah, my impression is they don't really want to do the job, they'll do it for now.
Alright, so, uh. So we're looking at all total a hundred and twenty thousand on this. On, go, all these things we just talked about. And we have a hundred and. We have a hundred, is this, I'm sorry.
Hundred and thirteen thousand.
We have a hundred and thirteen from the slip line, so one, one, three.
And we have thirty-five thousand in our HVAC fund. It could be added to this project, but that leaves us without HVAC funds for repairs for all the rest of the town. That's the one problem.
But it seems to me we're kinda getting pretty close to redoing every system in this town.
Correct, every year we uncover those.
Okay, so what what do we? Based on this, we wanna vote on this without?
Well, I'm looking for feedback and then. Based on how the board wants to proceed, um, if September second or second, we could actually set a town meeting for. Capital fund transfers, cuz of this nature, we require a town meeting. Cuz it's.
Why don't we make a motion, Terry, to have a vote in town meeting the same time on September second?
And then what I could do is, cuz I have to actually end the motion, right, which accounts were moved in, I don't have all those numbers, but we could. Make it solid on September second.
Alright.
Yeah.
Or make the moment. Yes, sir.
So. The system that you're recommending for the senior center, so that's got heating as well, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, they're all, they're all.
So I I understand the benefits of redundancy and fixing a furnace, is that something that maybe that portion can maybe be. Delayed till maybe next budget year? And if you're getting a new system, you would think that the heating aspect, I bet that should probably.
That's a good point, because. Uh, I'm gonna, a personal thing I mind, I have a furnace that's about fifteen years old and they keep telling me it's about time, it's about time. But I have the splits and I now heat my house with the splits. But there are times on cold nights where the splits need a little bit of assistance, correct Pete?
That is correct.
That's you told me, correct? So the question is, is our furnace shot to the point where it's not even there for auxiliary heat if they should need it?
It it currently works, I will not promise you that it will break down this winter. But it does have a current leak in it from the gaskets inside, but so there's a little bit of water.
And we can't fix that.
We cannot, we, it can be fixed, it cannot be short, so if you need to buy, fix the whole furnace, you have to take it apart.
Run the extra, that's a violation.
Let it stay. Yeah, it 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 needs attention, it it might make another year, it might. Not explode, but it might crack. In a month.
Right, I guess what I'm thinking is, is that extremely cold out and you need offsetting heat by the furnace? What's the likelihood that people are gonna actually go to the senior center, right, and worst case, we have the school that has heating, which should also be a heating center in a case of emergency?
I I I agree, I leave that to the board to discuss, I'm.
Yeah, I'm not sure, uh, you know, if people go there when it's cold, hot, like. You're at, you're talking about if it was a heating, uh, uh.
It's super cold.
Heating center for people to go with their houses.
Right, well, I believe that's, that's what was noted that it's it's also serves.
Lisa, I'll get right to you, hold on, I wanna answer this. Uh, I. Let me tell you, the, that heat will go on. Even with the splits. The splits in my house, and I, you know, it, it gets to about sixty-nine, sixty-eight, sixty-nine degrees. And I have to put, there's times I have to put on my gas fireplace, get the. Fan going or turn on the heat to make it comfortable for. The seniors in my house, so, um. I understand what you're saying, but I don't think this is just a heating, a warming center type of, little. Lisa.
It would also be a plumbing issue, wouldn't want to have plumbing freeze, also, how much would it cost to repair it? Does it just make sense to replace it?
Or play anymore, you could do that.
I thought you got a forty thousand dollar quote for repack.
Yeah, so that is, that was with the, I'm hungrier, sorry, that, it is not on this forty thousand dollar quote at this point in time, cuz prices have since gone up since last year. So I told them to exclude that at this point in time, I followed up with them to verify that. Um, I could certainly get you a price for a more efficient boiler replacement. And and present that to you, Mark, for a comparison, if you'd like.
How much is the repair?
Fifteen thousand.
Since it's not the primary heat, can we go with a smaller? Furnace?
You probably could, I I would bring in, in the HVAC company. And, um, I will explore all that with them and I will report back tomorrow with pricing.
Okay, so we still need to just do. HVAC, yeah, meeting on that.
So right now, is the board happy with the sixty-four thousand HVAC, put that in the. In the works of. Transfers?
We can, yeah, we could just transfer my stuff to go to a town meeting, but yeah. I would think so.
Yeah, let's do it, um. Make a motion that we set a town meeting for a discussion and or passage or denial of the senior center HVAC. And the chapel. Many split systems on September second. What time?
Well, um, September second is the regular board second meeting, where we'll set the town meeting for two weeks after that to ratify it. So we actually have to set the town meeting for the second board second meeting. In September, September sixteen.
Why?
Unless we do a special board second meeting to set. The town meeting for September seventh.
What?
I don't have the paperwork, I don't have the.
So we can't do it now.
I don't have all the account numbers needed, so.
We'll send that, we all agreed on it, but, okay, so you just wanna set it for September sixteen? No, I'm I'm not sure.
I have nothing to sign tonight, which is at the hall for a town meeting.
Alright, so maybe we wanna just have a special meeting, or we have it on the second?
I'm, I'm ready for September, uh, second, I am, I. Away for five days, I'm looking at, I'm I'm sorry, not that it's all about me, they. When they come to people. Alright, so on September second, we'll set them.
Town meeting for the nineteenth.
Alright. It's board, any discussion on that, we'll set.
Right.
September sixteen.
Sixteen.
Are you just, what are you gonna say?
No, I'd like to say something, but I don't know about the right time.
About B A D and the HVAC?
About the back of sun.
Okay.
Is that a, sure. Muffy Carter, three four donny. Uh, we had our, the CLI had their annual meeting at the back of the center, so I had the opportunity to spend some time talking to Bernadette. Who pointed out to me that the entire fifteen years she's worked there, the air conditioning hasn't worked appropriately. I know you put some mandates on the window units. But these are seniors, you guys, I mean, and frankly, there's a little bit of difference from a place where seniors go. And a chapel that's used three or four times a year to, for a book sale, or putting or fixing the roof on the public works. Department where nobody's sleeping there, spending, maybe spending your day in there, so, sorry Pete, not, not, I'm just making the point. These are seniors, they deserve to be treated with the utmost respect. If they need a place to go to be cool, or to be warm, we shouldn't be sending them over to the school, I mean, that's what that. That's what that building is for, so I just wanna say, if we have to raise money. And I told Bernadette that, if we need to start taking donations to pay for that work, then damn it, we should do it. Because our seniors in this town deserve it, so if the money's not in the budget. Tell me Steve, and I'll, I'll get working on raising money to get the work done, cuz I think it's a shame that this is. Still not this.
So sometimes I feel like I'm not communicating correctly, and I apologize for that. Because if if she's saying this, then I must not be. I'm all for this. We have to have a town meeting. And we're gonna do that in the middle of September, so I I appreciate your comments and stuff, but. I think the board has done very well over the years, making sure we're, and and honestly. I'm a little upset that it hasn't been working in fifteen years, because. Uh, fourteen years ago, somebody else would have been sitting here, they would have had the wrestling, I I'm not even wrestling with it. I I'm all for it, okay, but I I gotta get out the town, it's okay, no. Yes.
Judith Seinfeld, formerly of eighty-four West Street, I've been going to the senior centers since it was built. It's never worked right, you sit there and you freeze, I I shiver, I put on my jacket. The last time I was. Last week, I think, I had the jacket and my coat on, inside, shivering. It's so cold, and actually moisture was coming out of the ceiling and dripping on us. And.
I hear you.
Say from the get-go, and every time it's postponed, and postponed, and mandated, and they've been fussing with it for, I don't know how long. And I've even offered to pay for a dehumidifier, we're sitting there. Sweating and the sweat can't evaporate because we're so, it's so humid in there.
Yeah.
And people come over in the morning when it's nice, but when we sit there and play bridge in the afternoon, it's cold, and. Volchester's having the same kind of problem where we play, and it's like sixty-six degrees, and there's a thermometer there, so we can tell, I don't know what it is in Columbia. But for seniors, it was my understanding, when August Craig was dealing with seniors. That for seniors, it should be seventy-two degrees, not sixty-eight. And it's much colder than that.
Yeah, okay, I thank you very much.
People have coats there, twenty years ago, so we go and get them if we forget to bring our own.
Yeah.
There's like twenty of them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get all paperwork for you.
Please do. Uh, what's the next thing?
I'm seeing this or social services.
Why don't you head and send it out?
So. We set up a six-month trial of restructuring our social services, where we. Uh, expanded Brittany's role, um, strictly transportation part-time, transportation and social service coordinator. Uh, so she's now full-time employee, sharing those two roles, we put Bernadette in charge of. Uh, supervising all the needs of social services. And we set up a quarterly review committee that's been very helpful in brainstorming ideas for outsourcing. Uh, extra services, I've asked Bernadette to pull together a summary of all the. Um, activities that they provide for our residents, uh, the time it takes between herself and Brittany to provide those activities. And my recommendation to the board was to make this a full-time commitment as a solution to Columbia's social services. And then we have Brittany and Flo, they're available for questions. Bernadette and Flo, Brittany is that.
Bernadette, you wanna tell us about it a little bit, how's things going?
Things are going very well, uh, Brittany and I work very, very well as a team. With the help of Judy Ortiz and the focus group, I think we're really bringing a lot of topics to the focus groups, discussing it. Learning what's working best here for Columbia. Outsourcing as much as possible, we're not here to counsel or do any of those items. But we're here to make sure that the, our community, our, their needs are being met in one way or another. And between Brittany and I, we are, we are doing that. Small steps at a time, building relationships and, um, providing a secure place for people to go to. To talk about their needs, so, um. And and from the sheet that you have in front of you, it shows exactly what we've been.
This is our new business, everyone, we just jumped in, so Brittany, and Bernadette, that's a fail on.
Yes, um, so we are really working with, between the grants and utilizing mobile food share to help with our pantry. And. But this also tells you the approximate time that we're spending on each thing. And the total hours separated between Brittany and I, I'm mostly really overseeing everything. Um, enjoying the grant writing and, and more of, uh, the upper level. Uh, performing in a more upward level than Brittany, she's doing a lot of the cases. The energy assistance and, um, dealing with the pantry. And mobile food share and such, so between the two of us, we're really getting the job done, um, and having a place for people to go to. I think this is not something that's really ever gonna go away, we're always going to need this. Um, we will always refer out, I don't feel that Columbia is a place where we're going to need. Um. A psychologist on, on staff or anything of that matter, we are definitely just. Needing someone like myself and Brittany to get the job done. And working with United Services, Access Agency, and all of the other area agencies. Um, to get the needs met, this, anything I have question?
I do. Um. I went to something, an event last night, and of course, which is fine, I mean, it comes with the job. These people probably get questions too, when they go to things and they say, hey, we need this, we have a problem here, and I said, okay. Alright, tell me about it so I can understand, and I asked them questions and everything else. And, you know, somebody said, ah, and I, you know, I'm sorry, you come at me like that and stuff, and I said, listen, I. If I don't know about it, I can't try and find a solution. And we all feel the same way, we don't know about, I mean, you can attack us and everything, go, what, whoa, wait. Let us stop them. So, um. How do you? How do you? Invite or try and find out that we're not missing anything with our scenes? Do you have, uh, I, I see here, you did, uh, wellness checks, three. Is that three since we've done this, or, um, are there other, you know?
Though, that was just this.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, the three cases were in this past month.
Okay.
So we've done other wellness checks throughout this, um, approximately a year of having this together. Now, we've, we are reaching out, we're definitely not going door to door, and I think that is as safe as maybe it used to be.
No.
Um, but we are getting the word out.
Okay.
Last Friday, we just had a community, unity in the community, talking about all of the various. Uh, services that the town can provide and all of the other area agencies. Um, it was highly attentive, well-received, very successful, and we really were able to get the word out. Doing different events like this, um, working with the schools, we are currently working with the fire department. We have a release of information, so that when they're on a call, they realize that there are. They need us to be on site to help, there's a sign of a release, we're able to come in. Evaluate the situation and refer out where needed or manage within-house. Um, so we have plenty of avenues on where we are.
Good.
Able to.
Alright, very good, cuz. No, no, nothing to serve a person, but I wanna know, and you told me, and so I feel better. We're doing what we can to, you know, make sure people talk about other people. And we do check on them and we provide stuff for them, so that's the kinda thing, I'm, thank you very much. And I went to the wellness, I mean, not that, you know, unity thing last Friday, and I was very impressed. I was very impressed that I didn't need any other services yet, thankfully, but I mean, it was amazing up there, so I appreciate it, and it was, uh, it was. Really promising, so thank you.
Yeah, I see, my observation is, you'll get, you get information from the fire department, because I think that that generates, um, a lot of referrals. And, you know, and then some of it's gonna be word of mouth, you know, this, I think they're developing a reputation, and I think you get close that way. Um, it is, it's always good to kinda stay on top of that, to make sure you're not missing somebody, but it's, yeah. I I mean, I think you're doing a good job with that, it's been my observation.
Thank you, I know one other places, so I'm actually receiving a lot of referrals from doctor's offices.
Oh, you've got that too now?
Yes, so, and the hospitals or the assisted living centers. They're reaching out to the towns and saying, hey, we have so, so much transportation, or. Will you transport them if they're in a nursing home? Or that they, that the family is living in California, they don't have anyone here, what other kinda supports can we provide them in your, in your town? So it's, it's really been wonderful and very eye-opening to me to see what our needs are and how we're going to be able to do that.
Bernadette, thanks for coming in, I have a question, you talked about referrals to United Services.
Bernadette, thanks for coming in. I have a question. You talked about referrals to our United Services. And I just want to get an idea as what's done to try to protect, protect the confidentiality of those clients? You know, I'm concerned because of the fact that, um, to my understanding, neither you nor Brittany are certified as, as social workers or counselors. And I just want to make sure that there's some kind of protections in place to protect people's confidentiality if those referrals are made. Can you tell me what you have in that regard?
We have a sign, um, that, that we've got our release of information. It has gone through the uh, focus group, the social service focus, focus group. We've agreed upon what we have. Um, all the retired professionals that are within this group, um, have, have said this will work. Um, we also, so United Services as well has a sign of release that they have, that we will have to sign as well as the client. So we are fully covered on both sides.
See, I think, you know, I was, we were looking, I was talking to somebody else on the committee, um, Lori. And we were thinking of looking at it just to kind of set up a good protocol for it. We do have a release. We just, I, we were thinking to kind of look at it again to make sure that it follows all, um, what we're, you know, the, all the guidelines that we're supposed to follow for HIPAA. Yes, there is one, but I would, just was gonna relook at it again. And I know when I was working, I must have had training for confidentiality once a year and maybe bring in somebody from United Services to kind of go over that again was my thought.
Yes, I've actually looked into training for them.
Yeah.
And there is a bunch out there that can get signed up at one.
I was thinking during our sort of, we can do something like that.
Yes.
You know, it's always good to stay on top of that stuff because that's something, you know, just we need reminders all the time for that.
I think it needs to be revised, um, continually.
Yes.
Everything is always changing statutes and regulations, things of that.
So that was my thought, just to kind of look at it.
Well, right now it's a six month test. So if you think this is working, we would extend it until our, our, our needs change again?
I don't think so.
Okay, so, uh, so I move to approve the continuation of the social services operation as it's currently structured. Uh, indefinitely or until needs of the town change. Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
No, please, I said yes. So, uh, let's see, you're a nation. Bernadette, thank you. Uh, I gotta tell you, when we started this, there was questions, there was concerns. Um, you've done, you know, by every account I've talked to and I get around and I talk to people and stuff, you guys have a great job over there. So.
Thank you very much.
Big thanks to Flo as well. Appreciate it, buddy. And Jim?
Yeah, very good. Excellent. Can we go back to, uh, the back of?
Yes.
Thank you for your time, everyone. Appreciate it.
So.
Guys have a terrific evening, everybody. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have, uh, Brandon. Uh, online, he is with the um, company that does the speech cameras. Got a lot of questions. Brandon, how are you?
I'm doing fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we have some, uh, some people here are gonna ask some questions and stuff. Um, I, you know, if you have your questions.
I've been wanting to put a slide up, up on, on view for us too. Were you able to share that?
We shared a lot of our information. So if, if you're going down the line and I'm looking at everybody and they don't have any questions on there. You know, I'm gonna move you on a little bit quicker. I don't want this to be a long time, but really a basic so we can get to the questions because your base, I had most of your basic stuff, but they have some specific questions. So that's, it's on you.
Absolutely. All right. Well, uh, thank you again for having me, uh, join tonight. And, uh, yeah, I'm absolutely here to ask or answer questions. But I kind of wanted to do just kind of a brief overview again. I know they touched on it, you know, a couple of weeks ago, but obviously the Speed Enforcer Collaborative is a collaboration between two different companies coming together as a joint partnership. Traffic Logix, Dakrotech, I'm actually from Dakrotech. Dakrotech's been in the enforcement software solution, courtroom management solutions for twenty five years. We're based out of Chicago. We got some offices in Toronto. Um, but we are big on due process. So, um, just so you guys understand the Dakrotech solution, the back office, everything that helps that processes the citations. We've been doing courtroom management in Kane or Cook County, which is Chicago for over twenty five years. So we've been working with law enforcement for a very, very long time. This is just another piece of our company that we are working with now. Um, the first things first, so, uh, some of the gentlemen in the beginning of the meeting, they kind of jumped ahead and I, I do appreciate the, you know, the back and forth. It is quite nice to hear that. Um, you guys do have some issues and we ran some preliminary traffic studies and I want to always show this visual. This is why we're here. So this is a car that's in, uh, this is in outside of Chicago, uh, right by kind of O'Hare Airport a little bit. But it's in a, in a zone where there's children, obviously sitting there, walking out of school. And the car is doing fifty three and a twenty five and they're speeding and they're passing in that zone. Um, come to find out uh, that person got some violations, um, and they found out it was a high school student that did it. And the good thing that came out of it was they have not seen that kid and he's still got two more years of high school. They still have not seen that vehicle actually go through that area. So the behavior was changed, but this is ultimately what this is for. Um, it's a tool, it's a false, it's a force multiplier. You have one resident trooper in your program and it's great. But again, it kind of goes back to the whole idea of like, he can't be everywhere at all times. And I know the one gentleman even asked about saying, hey, can we have somebody some presence? Absolutely. Cause now I can add some other tools in where they can monitor and look at those other streets while he's out there doing, uh, his due diligence in the other area. So it's a good thing to have. Um, some of the characteristics of these systems, big thing, like I said before, it's behavioral change. Um, changing speeding behavior can be done in multiple ways. A lot of these pieces is, is, is done through enforcement and it's holding people accountable. Um, the ultimate thing is, is that you can have, you know, other traffic calming devices and things like that. But you need a collaboration of multiple tools, not just one individual. And this is one that is very, very very, very serious in the state right now. When they launched it in twenty twenty three, they got a lot of support from DOT all the way down to all the local municipalities. And ultimately, this is the statute that came out. You guys are very much ahead of the curve in terms of your statutory uh, compared to other states. I really, really do commend how they've been running this and rolling it out because there is a lot of input from DOT. So we've been very close with them. Uh, we've been working with DOT since day one. We've presented with them. We've ultimately been the first, uh, uh, vendor in the entire state to be approved by the first three state or three cities in your state. So those cities are live and we're working on some more right now. Uh, secondarily, eliminating the time and effort of citing speeders. When you have a resident trooper out there and there, I, I did hear that there was a, uh, law enforcement, uh, gentleman in the stage there. And he, uh, made some good points, but the biggest thing is like doing traffic stops on your roads. I'm from Illinois. It's wide, you know, relatively flat roads in your state. I've been there for the last two years, spending time driving all over that state. You got some dangerous roads, a lot of hills, a lot of curves, a lot of tight roads. It's not easy to pull somebody over and do it in a timely fashion. Um, the efficiency factor, again, going to that, offsetting the cost of traffic enforcement. That's the other piece of this. So the fact that you have some revenue to offset some of these pieces to expend into traffic calming devices in other areas. Doing anything that's rev, uh, revolving around engineering of the roads. You can use that, that statute to allow you guys to do that. And that's what this is ultimately for. And Vision Zero is the entire driver of this entire system. So that's really the big thing. Vision Zero, if you don't know, is a uh, Swedish program from the nineties that the, and almost the entire United States is now adopted. It's basically saying using engineering, uh, devices like this, technology, anything to not have any fatalities. That's really what they're trying to go towards. And this kind of goes into, uh, the typical speeding programs that are out there. Um, what kind of makes, uh, the Speed Enforcer Collaborative different is, uh, we have multiple pieces to our, uh, uh, system. It's not just, hey, send a piece of paper in the mail. You're done. We actually capture images, we can process the citations and then we can offer those people that proper due process like I talked about in the beginning. You know, if a violator pays, appeals or ignores, we have all of the tools inside of one system. Not every single company has the ability to do that. So really, you're getting a holistic system that can be run from front to back. And that's really a big thing. And we'll touch base on some of that contesting because I know you guys had some questions on that. But the first thing is establishing the program. We're doing that process right now. Um, you know, we, we offered our, uh, third party uh, to come in and run some traffic studies, which I, uh, know that, uh, Mark and, uh, uh, your first selectmen shared with you guys. I, I do have those if you want to look at them again. Um, but that was day, that, that's, that's day one. That's seeing if you actually have an issue in your town. And we do it third party because we have a trusted partner that is a big international company that can run those tube studies. They're very independent. They run the whole thing and then they give the data back to me and I make sure that it's presented to you in a way that can be, uh, digested and say, hey, we got a problem or we don't, we don't have a problem. Um, then it's establishing ordinances, going through DOT approval. The DOT approval is, is, is a process. Um, one of the good things, uh, in my company is the fact that uh, I have a lot of retired law enforcement that actually work for my boss is actually retired chief. And then we have a lot of people that are from the government um, that work for our company now and we are able to work with DOT hand in hand. And that DOT approval is basically the playbook of how you're actually going to execute the statutes that the state allows you to run these systems. And it takes a lot of time and effort. We actually help you guys out. We I would say pull majority of the data, can't pull all of it because we don't have access to every single data piece. But we really make sure that that is correct because that is published publicly and that's out for the public to see. Um, so it is a big, big piece of it. And then once that gets approved, then you can start the implementation, doing the installations. And you know, going through training and making sure that all of the due process pieces are put in place. So that when the system goes live and you have your thirty day warning period, you're ready to go. Um, and then the last thing is the analyzation of data. Uh, my, uh, my boss last night, he was just at Middletown presenting their data. Uh, obviously you've probably seen a lot of the news clippings and, uh, Chief Costa, he's been a great partner. Uh, we've actually been able to, in the first fifty days of their program, we've reduced their egregious speeding by forty percent. It's been a fantastic story to tell because ultimately at the end of the day, they're on Route sixty six as well. And they're in a very dangerous part of Route sixty six. They had a lot of fatalities in that area and it's a four lane highway. I've ridden that, that road. It is dangerous. And we want to make sure that the data comes back and we ultimately can present it to them. And we follow up with them. We're always at your disposal, showing you guys the data to make sure that it is correct. Because ultimately, we wanted to make that behavioral change. That's really what this is all about. Um, some of the daily management pieces, uh, since you guys are a smaller, uh, agency, but really to do all this, a lot of it's automated. So from a personnel standpoint, I always kind of focus on the processing of the violations. Um, obviously web payments, everything is done through the web on, in terms of the payments. But we do offer in-person payments if your agency decides they want to do that. Um, and then the managing of the heels pro, uh, process. That only requires a couple of people. It doesn't require a lot. And the reason that it doesn't require a lot because of the efficiency of how quickly some of this stuff can be processed. But again, it's double and triple check before we even put anything out there. No violations will ever leave the system that have not been able to be admissible in court. Because again, we are a courtroom management system first. I am not a speed camera company. That's not what I am. So just so you understand that. Secondarily, the managing of it on the backend for the due process, since your first selectman is the LTA as well, uh, in your town. He can duly appoint people like Jim Britton did up in, uh, Washington, the first selectman up there. He actually has somebody that, he's a third party and he is the one that reviews all the contested violations. Their contesting was up in the beginning and it dramatically dropped off. And I will actually talk about some of the contesting reasons and why it dropped off. The state was very, very clear on their statutes. Uh, this is some of the camera systems. I'm gonna briefly touch on it. We have AC powered, solar powered, uh, it's night vision. IR color, you got it mounted about ten to fourteen feet in the air, uh, and operates in negative forty to a hundred and forty degrees. Uh, these are some of the images of them, mostly the solar, the left-hand side is Hilton Head, that's a AC power. But majority of the cameras that have been going in, uh, in Connecticut, a lot of them are solar. Because it allows you to be a little more flexible in putting them in areas that some of the AC powered systems can't get into because you got to run a bunch of power. You got to work with the power companies. And that can become very costly. Again, we're covering a lot of all the upfront costs on this. But at the end of the day, the solar power solution has been very, very successful. Uh, some of the images that do come over, again, it's a sixteen beam, uh, multi-lane, uh, system. Since you guys don't have multi-lanes, uh, like, uh, the Route sixty six in Middletown, they have, you know, it's a four lane highway. They got two lanes going each direction. Uh, the lanes that were, the roads that we were looking at for you guys, it was only, you know, single direction. Um, but, uh, it is LiDAR based, time of flight, meaning that the system has sixteen LiDAR beams and that's how they actually capture the violations. Um, all this is web based. It is SSL encrypted. We have, uh, multi-factor authentication. We are powered by inlets for registered owner information. We have to go through a very, very rigorous, uh, audit every single year to get that. But we also have to be SOC two compliant when it comes to the software. Uh, so that all those evidence packages that come over, all the data bars, everything that is, all the admissible, uh, information to process a violation, that is ultimately what's coming over from the camera itself. And then it's broken down into three simple steps, okay? Uh, one is confirm the violation, two, take an action, three, send the notices. The nice thing about the system is we actually help do step one and step three. So we are the ones that are ultimately doing that in the background. All I'm doing is I'm reviewing them. I'm making sure that the images are correct. And ultimately, we're sending that off to inlets after we've reviewed the fact that they were speeding, the images are good. And the fact that it can be something admissible in court. All of the people that are ultimately doing that are retired law enforcement here, uh, out of the Chicagoland area. And, and step two is ultimately when the, the town makes the decision. So somebody that is going to be appointed to process the violations, meaning literally, are we gonna send a citation? Are we gonna do a warning? Are we gonna reject it? That is statutally bound to you. Now, if it's rejected, there's rejection codes for every single piece. It's, you know, it was a bad image. It was you know, could have been, you know, any, any type of rejection that is ultimately in the system, there, I think there's like fifteen different types. They're all recorded and then it also can be pulled out analytically to see exactly if the camera is being efficient or not. Or you guys are making the right decisions or were making the right decisions. We're trying to hold ourselves accountable and be transparent as much as possible with everything that we do. The third piece is sending out the notices. It all goes throughout through our mailing house. You can kind of see, these are some of the uh, violations that get sent out currently. They also have QR codes attached to them. So that takes you directly to our citizen portal, which allows people to make payments as well as contest, uh, the violations. And we're gonna get to the contesting here in a second. Um, in terms of, you know, the payments and everything like that, it is all done through that portal. It's very easy. It's like a two, three step process. We found out that, you know, from young to elderly. It's been a very, very good program so far. So it's very simple to use. These are some of the contesting reasons. This is statutes that, that I pulled, uh, to make sure that we kind of covered this. But as you can kind of see, the first one, operator was driving emergency vehicle. Traffic control signal was inoperative. Uh, violation was necessary in order to the operator to comply with the order or direction from the law enforcement officer, which is observable on recorded images. Uh, violation was necessary to allow for passage, uh, for authorized emergency vehicle. Um, the motor vehicle had been reported as stolen. And then device was not in compliance with calibration. We do do, uh, third party calibration. The minute the system goes in, a third party co, uh, company comes out that is authorized by the state comes in, looks at the cameras, make sure that they're calibrated and they're ready to go. So that is something that cannot be contested. Uh, or it can be contested, but we have to have the certificates from the third party company on every single installation. And then that's done annually. So that's always being done. Analytics, analytics are huge. This entire system is built on analytics. We, we are triple checking this all the time. We're constantly watching it because again, we want to change behavior. Uh, some of these statistical charts, you've seen a vision of some of them. Um, and I'll kind of show them to you if you want to see them again. We have some heat mapping, uh, capabilities as well. Uh, one of the interesting things we found out in Middletown was, uh, that only now ten percent of the violators were actually Middletown residents. Uh, which was not the case in the beginning. So over that fifty day period that we actually saw, they started understanding like, okay, yeah, we can't speed in these areas that people in the town did. But then we were running heat maps for the respondents and saying, okay, these people are from New York, they're from Massachusetts, they're from all over the But then we were running heat maps for the respondents and saying, okay, these people are from New York. They're from Massachusetts. They're from all over the place. So trying to change their behavior, if they're transitory running through your town, that's not always going to happen, but the people in your town, they're going to know. There's a lot of signage. There's compliance. You have to have a sign on each side of the road, a thousand yards and three hundred yards. And there's a warning period. We can put out, uh, social media stuff, everything ahead of time so that the people understand that these systems are going in place. The other piece is top five violators. This is something that can be handed to your resident trooper. And give them predictive analytics on when they could sit out there in those areas and put a, uh, police presence occasionally to make sure that, you know what, if there's somebody that's violated, you know, twenty times in the last, you know, thirty, forty days, it's probably somebody you want to have a, a, a chat with. They're not going to have a, a simple like, eh, well, no, we gotta, we gotta change that behavior. We gotta talk with them. You know, if it's one of those people that's doing seventy-five and a forty, you know, that's, that's a problem. So we have the ability to pull the analytical data out of the system and use it for, uh, many different needs. The initial launching of the system, I, I always touch on this a little bit in terms of the slide. Again, complying with the state regulations, you guys already have a state statute. So it's already in place. Community and public hearings. That's why I'm here tonight. Uh, we also establish a local ordinance. Again, I've given, you know, samples, ordinances. I know it's already probably been drafted and whatnot. Uh, the other piece after a procurement is done, and if you choose to move forward with this program, again, we are already working in multiple different cities. So again, we have the ability to show you, these are what the contracts look like. But the biggest thing is the state, uh, permit support. It's huge. I, I can't stress it enough that the data has to be there. The DOT will not accept anything less than the system being properly put in place. They have a lot of oversight on this. We definitely work with them hand in hand along with you and your people. And we really want to make sure that that's done correctly. Because again, it is public record and we want to make sure that the program is established and it is out in the public and it's saying, hey, we are doing the right things. That is really what we're trying to achieve. Hardware installation, again, we'll work with Public Works. We have third-party vendors that come in and they install the poles, do all the installation, and then the calibration comes afterwards. Uh, then as well as, uh, software configuration, training, we're holding your hand a lot. So our, our customer service people are consistently working with you, probably every single day, taking questions, working with the staff, helping you guys out as much as we possibly can. And again, this is a partnership. It's a public, it's a public-private partnership. We're in this just as much as you, I'm sure. All of the articles, everything you've seen out there, ninety percent of it right now is my company. Because I am the only active live system in the entire state. There is some other places that have been approved, but, uh, they're not live yet. And, and I, I don't really know why. I know some of them are larger like Greenwich, they have New Haven. And, uh, I, I believe Weathersfield just got approved, so a little bit smaller community, but, um, you know, i- it's coming, you know, people are moving on this, but a lot of it is, uh, making sure that you're doing your due diligence, which you guys are all doing tonight, and I, I do appreciate it. So I'll, I'll leave it up to any questions. And that's what I got right now.
So how minimal are these systems, right? I understand from the last discussions, there are literally a number of cameras that think it's being offered, right? I mean, if these cameras have the ability to be like a roving where they can move, I mean, there are some streets that were identified.
No, but once they're placed, they're placed correctly.
Yeah. So once they're, when you approve, when you, when you go through the permit process, you can, you can ask for as many locations as you want. You just have to be, it has to be passed in a public hearing after you've drafted the entire thing. But once it goes in, it has to stay there for three years or that the program has to be established there for three years. Now, that doesn't mean that it has to be live and running for three years. It's just that that one, that particular location or five or four, whatever it may be, has been established for three years. And you don't really want to move them around. I'll just tell you right now, we learned that lesson up in Canada years ago. They wanted to move them like every three months. And what happened was, is they just had a revolving door of speeders and it never actually changed any behavior. So the statistics behind it were actually not good.
What's your experience after say they've been there for maybe six months? You know, you're, you're saying you're, you're, what you're hoping to is change drivers' behavior. What kind of behavior you see after these cameras have been outside for six months?
Yeah. So it, it, it depends on the locations sometimes. Uh, the more that, the more that is a transitory road, meaning like this just through traffic that you're just kind of, people are always coming and going. They're not the same people all the time. You'll probably see a thirty to forty percent drop. Okay? The school zones drop immensely. Uh, so if there's any school zones you want to look at and things like that, they, they drop immensely because people really know that they're not supposed to be driving there. The biggest thing is, is it's changing the behavior of the communities and probably just the neighboring communities. You're not going to get it unless all these cameras are placed all throughout the state, then you're going to see massive behavior change. You would love to see, you know, you'd love to see that vision zero. I mean, that's, that's the true goal. But if you can change it by thirty, forty percent, that's kind of the industry standard and it's, it's actually really, really good in terms of, uh, dropping the fatalities. The fatalities is what the biggest piece is. So if you can get about a sixty to seventy percent drop in fatalities or bad crashes, that's what they're looking for. And we can track that all through Yukon. The Yukon has a repository of crashes. That's what we'll be running those data pieces off of. And we actually have to submit, well, you have to submit as an agency up after eighteen months. You have to put in like basically a report card and they ask for some of these data points that we have reporting features inside our system to give that to you.
You asked some questions about your company. Um, how many municipalities nationwide are, are using your system?
Currently, uh, we're at probably, uh, nationwide, we're going to be close to twelve in the next month. So under contract, I mean, live ones, there's about eight.
And, and currently, how many municipalities in Connecticut are, are using your company?
Uh, so we have s- three active, uh, systems. We're the first three. So we're the only three. The Beacon Falls is coming online here very shortly. Uh, we just submitted their permit, so they should be, uh, probably approved here in the next two weeks. And then, um, New London is about to sign a contract with us and then I'm working with Portland and a couple other towns. But, uh, yeah, it, it's, it's a, it's a process that's taken some time because people really want to see the analytics behind all the different demographics, different towns. And it's kind of nice that we have a Washington. We have, you know, Marlboro. We have Middletown. So you kind of got a, uh, there's a difference between each individual agency and it's nice to see because each town can then go be like, okay, that's me. You know, Middletown's obviously the big one. Everybody's looking at that one, but Washington's doing this. Marlboro's not very big. Now Beacon Falls is kind of a transitory. There's a lot of people that cut through to get to these, uh, two main highways that kind of go through their area. So they're looking at that a lot, but I would say in terms of how the municipalities are doing their due diligence, I gotta give them a lot of credit.
How many speeding, uh, enforcement ta- tickets were issued last year, um, to your company nationwide?
Uh, nationwide speeding tickets?
Yes.
Oh, God. I mean, off the top of my head, hundred thousand, maybe?
And how, how do you project for Columbia based upon the study that you had done? What do you project for tickets in, in our community?
Um, so that's, uh, that's a good question. I can share my screen again. And actually here. So here is your study and I, I'm assuming you guys kind of reviewed some of this already. So here's the data behind it. And let's kind of start with, it goes by, uh, this is Route eighty-seven. This is your, um, I believe it's the between sunrise and sundown. So this is the one direction. So one direction in three days. Yeah, it looks like a hundred or four hundred and thirty-three, uh, violators, but there's about forty-three hundred in a duration of a month, and that's just in one direction. The next location on Route sixty-six, you're at like two thirty-six a day and that's about seventy-one hundred a month. And then on this other Route sixty-six location, little lower, about ninety a day. And you're at about twenty-seven hundred, uh, violations a month. So, you know, from a standpoint of a smaller city, these are about the similar numbers that we saw in Washington. So I mean, you're, there's a lot of people speeding. You have a lot of, uh, transitory traffic on these roads. Obviously you probably already know that because you know your town better than I do. But from what I can tell is you have compliance, but you have a lot of speeding though too. Because there is a lot of traffic on the roads. So the percentages don't look massive. But the amount of speeding that's happening, your one resident trooper can't, can't do all that. Just can't handle it. So I would say, once you put them in, I, I would say in a predictive, I would start high and then work your way low, like kind of like Middletown did. They started around like twenty uh, miles an hour and over, or some of them are doing it fifteen and then they move their way down to ten. And then you're looking at it around like, I don't know, it's like a hundred citations a day.
How much, how much revenue does, did your company itself, uh, generate from speed enforcement such as this?
Since we're, you know, relatively new and, and Cana- are you talking about in Connecticut or just an overall?
I'm talking overall, right now.
Overall, uh, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't have that figure completely off the top of my head. I would say, I mean, there's a lot of towns. I mean, you, you have to understand Middletown has, Middletown's doing about a thousand violations a day. So you can kind of do the math on that. And I mean, that's probably one of the largest programs that we put in. Um, but I'd say a couple million.
You, you submitted a contract to us and I am concerned because, um, there was a section, a L subsection for, um, it said that you can assign the agreement, um, by providing written notice to us. Has your company sold or assigned any of your agreements so far?
Sold our agreements to any other entities?
According to your contract, DAP protect, they assign this agreement by providing written notice of the assignee who will assume DAP protect's obligations under the agreement. I mean, right now we're hearing a lot of the things about your company, but under your contract, it appears that you can assign it to another, another right.
Yeah, that's, that's if we were, that's Yeah, that would be if we ever got acquired. Um, I'll just tell you, you know, like you guys know right now, we are a privately owned business. We have no intention of selling. This has actually been owned by the same people for the last twenty-five years. They just have that provision in there if it ever was to sell. And we ever had
Do we take it out of the contract if we want?
Absolutely.
I guess one of my concerns is you had, we, we would, I guess, potentially put up two to the, the speed cameras. So you've made, you know, people see that and they don't want to get it, so they'll slow down, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean they're going to slow down the rest of the town. You know, and, oh, and so in that particular areas, they're going to know they're there, so they'll slow down.
Correct.
I'm not sure. So you, you were talking about changing the
I had a question about that. Not a question. I had a thought about it. It's, it's, it was just a thought. Okay? We put, you have a right to farm sign. And I, I mean, on the, on the major highways and stuff, are there areas that say, uh, the town of Washington uses cameras to enforce speed control? And there might not be a camera on that street, but you're letting people know that there is some in the town. And then you put the signs where the cameras actually are. Wouldn't, would that, you feel that that would help slow people down through the town?
Yeah, the, the signage, uh, what we noticed, uh, when the signs go in, especially just on the systems, people know when they start seeing those signs, they do slow down. You, you see Middletown had a fifty percent drop. He went egregious with his signage. He started putting them all over the place, letting people know. And he really, you know, painted the town saying, hey, this is coming. And he had a lot of, a lot of, uh, recognition, but it, it dramatically changed a lot of people's behavior and they understood like not to speed through the town. It really was a big thing. So signage is key. Again, all these pieces, anything that has to do with traffic calming is big.
Needs to be a street.
What is, what is the lease term on this, on the cameras?
In terms
One year?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a one year. Yeah.
But don't we, um, guarantee three years to start?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, you're, 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 you're price protected for three years. Uh, we have a one-year commitment. Um, I, I believe truly that.
I'd like to see some history of what happens throughout the whole town. Say, middle town sounds like a great place to start because if they've had it, but just some history of how it affects the whole town, not just where these, um, cameras are.
Oh, to like, understand if it, if it changes behavior in all the other locations, you mean, across the town?
Yeah, because I would want it to say they're going to do something like this and affect, you know, slow people down throughout the town.
Please, you have a question?
I do, um, how much, how much time does it take for somebody to process the tickets? Because we're going to actually have to have somebody processing all these things. So what would, I mean, we need to hire somebody or pay somebody to do it. So what are we looking at there?
Yeah. So it's, it's actually from a, uh, perspective of amount of time that it takes for somebody to do it, they can, a trained person, by the time they get comfortable with the system, even if they're not comfortable, they can do a hundred in an hour.
Okay.
So it's, it's not going to be a, this is not something that's going to consume every waking moment based on the numbers that I saw. Now, again, Middletown is different. Washington's different. Marlboro's different. Marlboro, they say they spend maybe an hour to an hour and a half a day.
Okay.
It's, it's not a lot to process the tickets. It's the handling of the contestings. The contestings is dramatically slowed down when people understood the statutes was there was only six reasons. And we actually put that on the citizen portal when people go to contest on the forum, if they want to contest, they can only select from those six reasons and they have to fall
Is, is, isn't it true that the, uh, the statute provides those six reasons, but it says, but need not be limited to? It, it says in, uh, section, um, it's two B seven of, of the, uh, statute that the defense is available to the owner of a motor vehicle allegedly committing a violation of such darkness, which shall include, but not need not be limited to the defenses listed in subsection J. So basically it could be any kind of defense that they want to raise. It is just limited to the ones that you've identified. Am I correct?
It has, but nobody's actually come forward with anything like that. Again, it's new to your state. They could, yeah. I mean, the biggest, the biggest one was, uh, somebody came after the, there was a little box. There's a box on the images and things like that that come over and identifies the actual vehicle. And it was just over the edge and they tried to contest based on that. But the thing is, is that inlets only, they were the only vehicle in the area at that time. And the vehicle was identified by inlets as like that is the plate because it's all going to register owners.
So on that, okay, can you maybe explain a little more detail of the difference between the first level of appeal and second level of appeals in your uh, presentation? Because I, I guess I'd like to have a better idea of like what, what are we going to need? Again, there may only be six reasons, but just like a traffic ticket, right? It's people get traffic tickets and they have time on their hands. They can go and contest them a lot of times. You know, obviously the, the officers there. So I mean, there's certainly opportunities where maybe the processing of it, of hundreds may may be efficient, but potentially the hearing in a various levels of appeal could be cumbersome.
Yeah, true.
Yeah. So from the contesting standpoint, the, the level one contesting is basically, like I said, it, it could be Steven, it could be your, your LTA can actually review them and say, okay, yep, this is a, it's kind of a contest by mail situation. They don't actually come in for, in front of you and from a hearing officer or anything like that. He's just reviewing the images. And based on the contesting reasons that they have. So they submit all their own digital evidence through the citizen portal. Because that's their written notice, because that complies with the statute. And then it allows them to basically make a judgment on that. Now, if they want to contest to a higher court, you guys have similar rules in terms of like civil violations that they could contest to a higher court if they want to. So that is all going to be in your, uh, legislative language in terms of the actual violation. So when we, you make a judgment, it's called a findings, decision and order, gets sent out to them, said, hey, this is the ruling we made. And then it says, if you feel like you want to contest to a higher court, you have the capability and they can go up to, I think it's the infractions bureau or whatever district court you guys apply to are. So we do that right now in Marlboro. But nobody's contested higher. It's basically, they can only contest the process. Not the actual violation at that point in time, because you already ruled on it because it's a civil violation. All they can contest is, did you follow the proper steps? Did you send out the proper notices and things like that? That's it.
My understanding though is, is that if, once they exhaust the administrative remedies, uh, in the town, and, and right now we don't have those in place, um, they can go immediately to the, uh, to the superior court. So I'm, I'm not sure that, that is the end of the rule as you suggest here. So I'm, I'm not sure that, that is the end of the rule as you suggest here. I, I also noticed.
That's, that's the contesting aspect of it there. Cause you've already ruled that the violation was a violation. If they say that, that doesn't suffice, all they can do is they can go to the higher court and say, did they follow the proper practices? Cause it's a civil violation. It's not, it's not like a DUI. It's a four.
Somebody has to go to court. It can happen too.
Huh?
Somebody has to go to court and follow that whether it be the states.
Yeah, they would have to go to court and then all they're doing is contesting the process in which you gave them proper due process. That's all they're contesting.
Now, in terms of the administrative burden on the town, my reading of the statute tells me that, um, basically that each and every recorded image must be reviewed and approved by either a sworn police officer or a town employee before a citation can be mailed. So is that what you're saying that they can do that within an hour? So they can review, say a hundred images? And, and decide whether or not there's been a violation?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a very efficient system.
And I backed up just from that, picking out that clause. Uh, I don't have in front of me, but isn't that protecting the town on them just switching without any notification? Not that they can't?
Well, that you've done.
You're talking about changing the ownership and stuff?
Changing ownership, that's more, protect the town that they just can't do without notification. Not that they can't do it.
It's a matter of due process is what it is, you know, but it's just that they can't, you know, it's got to be reviewed by somebody in the town.
No, no, no. Are you that what you're talking about?
Yes, that, that if you take that out, this company could change without.
I think he's talking about when you crossed off.
Yeah, they can reassign it without private consent.
Right.
That's.
Wait.
It was like the.
This will leave tomorrow.
I just want.
Yeah. Well, I think we need to, uh, to reach out to some of the towns.
Yes.
It's a question, how are collections handled normally on this thing? If you have somebody who's, uh, doesn't pay the ticket and they're in default?
Yeah, so, so there is a debt recovery functionality inside the software that allows you to gather all the data after it's exhausted, all the due process, and then it's gone to a, I, I believe it's like thirty days. I have to look at the statute again, but eventually it can get to a third-party collections company. But you got to make sure you follow all the proper notices and everything like that. So eventually it can get there. I, we have connections with some of the licensed. Um, again, I don't want to be judge during and executioner on this, so we don't do collections. We just collect people that want to pay, that's it. But if it will goes to collections, that is somebody that you can contract with. And we have some partnerships that we have out there that we work with.
So would the town have to hire a, a collection agency to do that? Is that correct?
Yeah, and typically most of them offer it as like no cost collections. They just, they tie a, you know, percentage fee onto it and they only make money if, if they collect.
And, and, and would the, um, the unpaid citations, um, affect a resident or are the owners of credit rating?
No, it does not hit their credit and it does not hit their, uh, insurance because it is a civil penalty. And we actually have to scrub the data. So just so you guys know, uh, this came up probably about five months ago. We were reading deeper into the statutes and found out that our system, thirty days after due process is given, I have to erase it from our system. That is part of your state statute. So that was another piece. Again, it's, you know, protecting privacy and everything like that. So, yeah, that's, that's a big piece of it. So they can't really, even if they wanted to, they wouldn't even know.
So it doesn't affect their credit or the insurance?
No. No, that's, that's a huge.
What's, why, why is that?
What's the motivation to pay it? To pay it if it doesn't affect their credit?
Well, it goes to a election.
It does, but then it doesn't affect their, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, just a thought. I'm just, no. Some people will pay and then some people will say it doesn't affect my credit or insurance. So if I owe it.
Yeah, so, so that is a, it's a, it's a very valid point. There is legislation I know that's going through. Eventually they're going to probably get to DMV holds. I think that's where they're going to go because every other state does it now. So eventually what happens is they just put a hold. So when you go to get your registered, registration done, you're going to have to pay at that point in order to get your car registered. That's the other piece of the teeth that they're missing in the statute. Any other questions?
Were we able to add and build if, if this becomes a successful program and you only have Xonic cameras that we can integrate more and more without?
I'm sure they'd.
Much is prices more and more.
Yeah, sure. Eat all the time.
Crawl before you walk though. And then when you can walk, speed walk, don't, don't, don't run. Always do this out and roll it out slowly. Goes a lot smoother that way.
I do like the idea that we have to have a town meeting to do this and see what people want to do.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I definitely agree. Good point.
Okay. You have questions? We're good? We have questions, we can write them and get them to you?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very good. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
No, thank you. Take care. Have a good rest of the night.
Thank you. Well, bring it all.
I think it will be a well-attended town meeting.
People will be rushing to get there. Uh, I heard Lake uh, pool of the application for a raft with Dale Morgan. So I'm like here. I move to approve the application of a raft for the, for Dale Morgan, nine Hoover Drive, for now Max administrative group. New raft time. They need the, the front to be able to put this out there. No problem. Max says yes. All I care about, just as long as they keep it seventy more, seventy-five feet from the shore. You know, we get a hundred. But there is motion. Uh, any, all those in favor? Any discussion? All of the better. I, I, thank you. Resignation zoning fairing them from Lake Managed Advisory Committee. It's two grab. Uh, the town administrator report.
Uh, just wanted to forward to be aware. Our fuel pricing contract with Diamond Well, uh, made an offer to us to extend our contract a year. I ran it by um, Bart Goldstein, Bart Titan Energy Fuel Consultant. Uh, he recommended with the turmoil in the world. Uh, if, and we got pretty good savings. We got, uh, heating oil from two sixty-two down to two fifty-one, diesel from two sixty-five to two fifty-four and gas from two sixty-four to two forty-six a gallon. And that's an extent, that extends us out through um, June of two thousand twenty-seven. We're locked. Now we have a committee that we formed, which has Stephen and myself and that fire department of the school. And, um,
DPDW.
DPDW. And we consult and everybody agreed that this looks like a good deal. And, uh, we, we locked. So that's just more good news. We try not to play the market. We try to always serve the lock and save as soon as we can. Just wanted to be aware of that. And I just got back today at DM safety program report on our dam at, at the lake. Um, everything is safe. There was some analysis of water seeping down the spillway, but then going into the spillway before it gets all the way to the end of the spillway. So we might have to, um, hire our engineers to help us analyze, make sure that we figure a good way to seal the spillway a little better and to make sure we don't have any pockets um, under the spillway. So more analysis to follow on the, on the dam. And that's all I have seen.
Okay. So responding on the correspondence, we have the Connecticut State Police report for July. Twenty-six traffic stops, eight infractions. But the twenty-six, we don't know what they were there, you know? It could have been lane change, illegal lane change, wrong turn, that type of thing. So that's one. That's all two K troopers who called on Columbia and with one uh, state, you know, one assigned to us, plus the other ones that rolled through here. Twenty-six traffic stops. Uh, yeah, so correspondence, you can read for yourself. Second budget. Move to approve the transfer presenting totaling eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. That was written here. We're in. So again, this is your cleanup and stuff. We'll have our settlement of where we are financially the end of last fiscal year, probably October. So. Any questions on this? All those in favor? I move to approve refund that's presented to one thousand five hundred. I don't get that number. I'll get it.
Three thousand five hundred and sixty-seven and thirty-nine cents. And this. Excellent.
Sorry. I'm going to need a refund in the amount of one thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Um, so. Yes. Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
And, and my book there? We have two bills, groups of bills. I'll explain them. I move to approve the payment of bills totaling sixty-eight thousand, sixty-two dollars and forty-six cents consisting of twenty-fourth of five emergency, a four twenty-five regular, from five hundred and six emergency, three five hundred and six regular credit card and paychecks. That's just the first one. Is ballot box really set up back? I mean, will we get anything from the state for that?
No.
The camera system for the ballot box?
Oh wait, they don't have to. They weren't in the fight, but then they saw expensive ones and said, no, you still have to deliver a good one. What did it send?
That's surprising. Yeah. Six thousand, six hundred dollars for product members with?
Yeah, that's how we got our one million, four hundred thousand dollar grant. Me, they had to go through. So I want to do writers and bodies in the ocean, the jelly chains. Um, you're losing.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the next one. I move to pay bills totaling seven hundred and thirty-four thousand and two dollars and fifty cents consisting of twenty-five, twenty-six regular. This is for our contractor working on the school. Correct?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The bow is the door. Thank you. Um, audience citizen. Steve Garden.
Ingrid Wood, Preacher to Route eighty-seven. Thank you very much for considering an automated traffic monitoring system. I have experience with two such. One in this notorious city of Boston where I lived for thirty years. And I want to say although everybody hated it, it worked marvelously well and people accommodated and obeyed the traffic signals more or less. Um, the other community is in Colorado. Um, and to Steve's question, where, how, um, did people know electronic monitoring is taking effect at the, um, border of the town? There was simply a big sign that said electronic, electronic monitoring in process. And everybody knew that they better be careful wherever they went and to stop at the lights and to pay attention because sure enough, you, you did get a, you did get a citation or a policeman came out of left field and you were stopped. So it was very effective in a town the size of well imagined. Thank you.
Thank you. Time there, nothing? Very good. Thank you. Great. Board member comments?
I, I just have a question. Mark, I, I asked about this at the last, um, meeting. Um, they cleared some, um, around the pond at the near the intersection of Chesbrough Bridge and, um, Pine Street. And you were going to look into it. I just wanted to find out if you found out what that was all about?
I did not yet. And was this normal roadside clearing? Was it more than that though?
It's cleared right up to the pond. What troubles me about it was it appears that they, um, sprayed urticide. Um, it is also over by, um, the new, um, culvert on Hunt Road. I saw that the, um, foliage is all dead around there as well.
So that was a spray. They used a watershed safe spray that deep as authorized, but it was mainly around guardrails. Um,
Well, it's pretty close to the, um, if, if they did it on, on, at the intersection of Chesbrough, it's spread up to the, to the water, you know? You can take a look at it.
Okay, so Chesbrough and Pine. Where Pine takes.
It's an intersection right there before you go up the hill.
Okay, I know exactly. I'll, I'll leave though.
Anybody else? Lisa? You good? Okay. So at this time I'm going to, uh, suspend the board selective meeting. Thank you all for attending. We need to leave now. And we are going to go into executive session where I'm asking Mark, stick around.
Just. For, for political purposes.
In time, we have to.
Eight forty-one.
So coming out of executive session at nine oh five and, uh, no action taken, we will, um, therefore resume the board selective meeting and adjourn, move to adjourn. All those in favor up here.
All right.